Good evening, welcome to the Village of Pleasantville Board of Trustees meeting. Today is Monday, January 11. So if you're watching live on Monday, January 11 and have any questions or comments, we encourage you to call in, the number 769-1677. As I have mentioned in the past, you can also pick up our meetings either live or on on-demand video at PCTV76.org. So our next regular meeting is on Monday, January 25 at 8:00 PM with a work session at 7:00 PM. A couple of things to announce. The first is that we've had ongoing discussions with our friends, I use that term advisedly, from Con Edison, their distribution line trimming people and their transmission line trimming people have been making their way through Pleasantville and indeed throughout Westchester on what seems like a reenactment of Sherman's March to Atlanta. They have been slashing and burning cutting trees at a level that I think all of us consider to be extreme.
Criminal.
As you know, we had a disastrous Sunday afternoon a few weeks ago up at Nantahagan Park. They have been more circumspect in their activities since, but they have the right, they report both from Albany to do what they have to do and from the New York City Department of Environmental Protection which owns the aqueduct to do the trimming they've been doing along the aqueduct. So it's been a grim scene of destruction. It's hard to imagine why some of these trees are any sort of a threat of any kind to the power lines. But there was a meeting this weekend, I was away this weekend, but Mindy Barad as Deputy Mayor was the host of that meeting. You want to report on what happened?
Sure. We were very fortunate to have Senator Cousins here at the meeting along with three gentlemen from, they were actually from the Department of Public Service which is really the, because they're not commissioners, it's not the Public Service Commission, so they're from the Department of Public Service. And we had about, would you say 50, 60 residents?
At least, yeah.
They weren't only Village Pleasantville residents because we also had with, I'm sorry, legislator Nona who sent out a notice to his constituents, so everybody from that district had also come along. I think there was a few things that we tried to pin down the Department of Public Service members on, and that was the guidelines that they have set forth for Con Edison. I think Brian, you tried to pin them down on that point, which we did, got nowhere unfortunately. And the communication that we've had and one of the points that Senator--
Well, I think we might have gotten somewhere. I think they weren't ready to commit to anything because they didn't have their attorney there.
Right.
So they were just listening, but I think they were--
That's a good point.
I think they were surprised that, you know, all we were saying, all I was saying is, you know, you have guidelines that you show on your, you know, but your own guidelines for tree cutting. If Con Ed were, was just abiding by those guidelines, we might, we might not like it, but we wouldn't be here angry today.
Right. That's right. That's right.
Except those guys weren't the decision makers though either. They had the--
Well, no, actually they were. David Morrell in the middle was the guy that did most of the guidelines.
Yeah, but my impression was they had to go back to the actual commissioners. They work for the commissioners.
They work for the commissioners, but these are the guys that I, David is the Associate Transmission Facilities Analyst Office of Electricity and Environment. He's the guy that issues the work orders and such for the utility line, for the utility companies to work. He's the guy that they go through.
Right.
So, you know, yes, I think the commissioner, the buck stops with them, but, you know, I--
I think if you want any action though, they're not going to act independent of going to the commissioners.
No, that's true. I think that that's very true. That was a little frustrating. I think Steve brought up a lot about the environmental impacts of cutting all the trees down with the habitats and drainage and so on. I think you really brought them to task on that quite a bit.
I attempted to, but they are, I found them to be very defensive.
Yes, they were.
They apparently have been having meetings around the state and a number of other locations, but did not offer a single iota of exception or change in heart or view. And I think that Jonathan's take and others, Brian too, I think was that it'll be a difficult time to get these folks to be catalyzed to enact some meaningful change in the way they do business. And that's unfortunate because I do think they were, as you said, some of the top agency officials, they certainly aren't going to do anything without the commission sanctioning it. I just, you know, I just see with them as well as with the Con Ed folks, a lot more excuses than considerate action.
Mm-hmm.
And that I find to be, and one thing that was raised by Tony Emerson about the additional flooding that they observed in the country club, I thought was really kind of interesting. I hadn't personally thought about that.
They didn't even make the connection.
Yeah, they did not.
And when I queried them about that and picked up on that, the first response was, "Well, I know stormwater, I did that in college."
Yeah, right.
I almost fell out of my chair.
Yeah, I did too.
For a professional to come up with that kind of response, I thought was just jaw-dropping.
The deniability of the fact that it's not having any impact on the environment here was just really kind of shocking.
And I pointed out to them afterwards that the watershed for the brook that runs through the country club is where they were cutting up there at the transmission lines.
Right. Well, they didn't get that at all.
Exactly.
But they were also queried about when an environmental impact study was done, and they admitted that the impact study was done in the eighties. So that was a pretty unexpected timeline there as we are now in 2010, and a lot of things have changed in 30 years.
Well, it just, I think we all walked away thinking that the only way we're going to sort of, you know, figure this out is if we just stop it.
Right.
You know, we need, I don't know if the New York Council Mayor is going to get volunteer, but we just, it's clear that it's out of control.
It's out of control, and nobody knows what the other person is doing.
These guys aren't doing what they, what they're supposed to be doing. That's right. And they're going, they're cutting a vast swath of green space in our county that has taken decades to grow. And these guys are just in, just overnight in some cases is destroying this. I just think we have to, even though they're almost done with Pleasantville, I think we have to be part of a group that says--
Part of a class action.
And maybe John Nona can help us, and maybe Rob Astorino can help us.
And Senator Cousins and Rob Astorino.
We just sort of say this has to stop.
The action points that we did take at the end of the meeting were that the residents that were in the room, because Senator Cousins does want to hear from everybody, and so does the Department of Public Service. So we had everybody, if, personal experiences and things that have happened in your backyard in your neighborhood, to email them to Patty with a CC to Senator Cousins. And you could get her email address right online if, maybe even Peter could pull it up in the meantime. But if we get all the information together here, and Patty would send it over to the Department of Public Service and the commissioners as well, and then we were going to do a walking tour of the neighborhood this week, we have to get with them to do that. And then the third thing was, and the most important thing, as Brian just stated, I think this has to, we have to, if we could issue a stop work order again here, we should do that, and all town of Pleasant, everybody in John Nona's district issue stop work orders so we can see, just coordinate what the heck is going on here, and to see if there's anything that is not being done correctly, which we already know that there isn't. And just, one side doesn't know what the other, what guidelines are you following? What safeguards are in place with the PSC to know that Con Ed is indeed working within the guidelines of PSC? I don't think they've done a check and balance. I mean, I haven't seen a PSC person walk our power lines. This is the first time I've met anybody here, and we've all been out on that, that row. So, you know, we really need to find out, stop work, stop the damage. There's nothing we could do about what's been done already, but, you know, we need to stop it now. You have Andrea's--
Yeah, it's Senator Stuart Cousins' email is S.Cousins, that's S-C-O-U-S-I-N-S, at senate.state.ny.us. So it's S.Cousins@senate.state.ny.us.
We can put it up on our website too, can't we?
I could put a general notice.
And even legislator, county legislator Nona, you could email, but I just, have your voice heard, tell them of your personal experiences. I think that they were rather shocked that some of the stories, a number of people that were here got to talk. Unfortunately, Senator Cousins had to go to a similar meeting in Greenberg, and she had to leave, but we tried to get as many people in as possible, and they did tell their stories, and they were horrible stories. And I'm sure there's a lot more out of there. And I told Senator Cousins and the gentleman from the PSC that if this meeting was planned in advance, we could have had about 10 rooms this size filled with people. That's how outraged everybody is about this, so.
Well, it's an extraordinary situation where if you actually talk to Con Edison about what they're doing, both on trimming distribution lines on residential streets and trimming transmission lines on the high-tension tower routes, what it really anticipates is a complete change in the way the world will look in the future. No big trees on the same side of the street as power lines, and no buffer between streets and residences and the high-tension wires. As Brian indicated, if you go to Con Ed's website, they have some relatively attractive drawings that suggest a sort of scaling down of the size of trees as you approach the edge of the tower. What's really happening is instead they just arrive and completely eradicate every bit of foliage anywhere near the tower, so.
It's called clear cutting.
I drove past today up by the parking lot opposite the pool and sort of Leland. An extraordinary mess, not only is it a tragic loss of vegetation, but also the condition they've left it in is itself problematic with these big stumps, some of which they'll come back and grind up, but their position on stumps in general is that they don't take them out, so.
Well, there was a number of people, there was a family here from Valhalla, and they said that there's just 30-foot trees just chopped off, like we had at the park and at the corner of Leland, and they're just still laying there. And they were chopped, they were cut down weeks ago. They don't see how they're even going to get them out of there to put them into a wood chipper, because there's no way to bring the wood chipper in there. And, which brings me to, at the corner of Leland, they were wood chipping at 7:00 AM during the week, last week. And they work seven days a week. This just doesn't stop. It's this, John Nona had compared it to Avatar, the movie Avatar. I haven't seen it, but it's--
It's a good comparison.
Is it? Okay, so there you go. That's what it feels like living in the community with Con Edison.
So what should we do?
Well, we're in the midst--
Well, those are the three action points, I think, you know, just people need to get it out there, and we need to, if we, whatever, can we issue a stop work order? Because on Broadway, I have pictures of what they've done on Broadway.
Oh yeah, I watched them do it.
Oh, unbelievable.
You need legal advice.
They have asserted that, I mean, we'd beaten on them very, very heavily, as you know, after what they did in the park.
Right.
They had asserted that they had the right to do it there. It's now clear they didn't, and we're expecting to get back the title search that proves that shortly, hopefully this week. Is that fair to say, Patty, you?
I think so.
Con Edison has agreed to make some restitution to us, although we haven't agreed to any specific deal as of the moment. It's clear we will get some restitution for what they did on our property. But in areas that are controlled by New York City DEP, in other words, the aqueduct right-of-way, New York City has given them the right to do what they believe needs to be done, what Con Ed believes to be, needs to be done. And they report that not only can't we stop them, we don't get much say about it. They certainly have tried to be cooperative from the standpoint of their public affairs veneer over the whole thing, but that's about as far as it's gone, so.
Well, then, you know, it's the PSC that gives them that permission.
And the PSC, they assert that if they don't do this, the PSC will fine them.
Well, that's what Brian brought that up to them. But I also, I read to them what Con Edison has told us were the two areas, two objectives that they were going after here, and they denied one of them. They said, "No, we never gave them authorization to do that."
Which was it?
I had read to them, the PSC issued guidance for two parameters. One of removable of undesirable trees, which they said yes to, and the removal of non-compatible vegetation undergrowth, they said no to that. They said they did not authorize Con Edison for that.
Okay.
That's what David Morrell had said right here, so.
Okay, so perhaps I should send them a letter tomorrow indicating the PSC has indicated directly to us that they don't have any directive to do that? And ask for the--
That was a takeaway, sure.
But the bottom line is, is that, you see how they have, they've issued this work order to Con Ed to have this, clear these rows throughout the state, really, and they haven't, they have no checks or balances in place to see what Con Ed is doing with that authorization. There is, there's a big, big gap there. So how do you get that authorization without checking if they're doing it properly? There's no, I don't understand how a government agency--
No accountability.
There's no accountability for it, right? Exactly.
They don't follow up. I, you know, we could send a letter. I think it's going to fall on deaf ears.
I do too.
If indeed this is the case, and Senator Cousins was sitting here, and if Senator Cousins is serious about wanting to make an impact, I don't know why her office can't send that letter. I think it'd have a lot more impact than, once again, you know, Pleasantville firing off another spitball at the side of the battleship.
Well, the problem is, you know, they come to a community like ours--
It's true, Senator Cousins should, it should be coming.
They do the damage and then they leave. And once they leave, we think, "Well, that was a nightmare," and then we don't do anything, you know, we don't go forward. They enter another community, they have a huge blow-up, they just, they, like Sherman's army, they just roll right through, and then they're at the--
Well, that's how I felt, is if they were getting something done as quick as possible before they get stopped.
Somebody has to stop this. Somebody has to, somebody like us, why not us, has to say, "Look, you may be rolling through, but we have to stop this. We have to be part of the group that puts an end to this," or at least, you know, get some sort of an injunction at the state level to stop what's going on here.
Well, exactly right.
But the question is, are they, what are they allowed to do on their own property or property that's been given, given to them by, you know, carte blanche by the New York DEP?
You know, it's, but it's done, it's sort of a--
I don't disagree. I'm just saying, what is the, you know--
This is a public function.
Well, they said--
These are, these are public servants of PSC, Department of Public Serv, or Public State, whatever.
Service.
Public Service Commission. You know, I just think that they are us, you know? Con Ed may not be us, but these guys that were here are us. And if we can't get them on our side, then we're in trouble.
Yeah, well, but as they said, they've been up county, they've been upstate, they've been down county.
Well, they've got these meetings all over the, all over the state.
They've heard this, they've heard this for the last two years, and they've done nothing to stop it.
You know, but--
So how much of it, they're Austin, how much of it they're Con Edison, and how much of it is, you know, we did our job, we issued the mandate, we've moved forward, and yeah, we got to hear this, you know, this noise, but that's, you know--
Well, that's why we have our state senator on our side.
Which is why I go back to say, you know, the most firepower we're going to get at this point is if her office issues a letter.
I'd like to know what happened in her meeting at Greenberg.
Maybe follow up with your--
I'd be willing to bet more the same.
Peter, maybe you should follow up.
I'll follow up with her.
She definitely--
And, I mean, certainly this one point about non-compatible vegetation is, you know, perhaps some matter that we ought to make a point.
Well, it's amazing that when you see them, yeah, when you see them take a chainsaw to, I wish they'd take a chainsaw to some of those vines that have pulled down all the trees all along the highways and things, but when you see them--
No power lines there.
Yeah, these little tiny things, boom!
There's power lines in those trees and stuff.
All right, so I'll send that letter tomorrow to Con Ed.
And John Nona also, I think that he--
Right, keep John in the loop.
Keep John in the loop as much as possible.
All right, well, as you can see, it's a grim story, and we continue to work on it. Thanks very much, needless to say, to Senator Stuart Cousins.
Yeah.
Patty and I went down and talked to her in her office a couple of weeks ago, and this was one of the subjects on the discussion, and it was her, her idea actually to have this meeting here in Pleasantville, so we thank her very much for that. And thanks also to former mayor and now county legislator John Nona for playing the battle of the role he continues to play in this venture. Perhaps a good segue to the report we received in the mail today, a few days ago--
We're going to cut down your trees, and we're going to raise your prices.
Exactly. The Public Service Commission, the aforementioned Public Service Commission wants the board to be aware that Con Edison has submitted a proposal for an increase in rates that would amount to about $855 million.
Cutting trees down ain't cheap.
They are continuing to have hearings on this subject. There was a hearing in White Plains that occurred today, but if members of the public wish to make a comment on the subject of Con Edison's rate increase, you can do so toll-free to the PSC opinion line at 800-335-2120. So that's 800-335-2120. And you can also go to the comment section on the PSC website, which is www.dps.state.ny.us. So--
What's interesting is that I think my Con Ed bill went up 25% last year.
I remember reporting that, it was that much, yeah.
And I called them, I was a little irate. I called them, and they reported, I believe I got this right, that they're allowed to pass through increases in their raw material costs, the cost of natural gas, the cost of whatever, uranium, you know, went up, and so they had to, of course, pass that along. Well, now, oil is no longer $130 a barrel, but down around 80 or so. And so I saw a mild relief. I think it came down maybe 10%. I don't believe this 19% increase has anything to do with their cost of resources. I think this 19% increase has got everything to do with--
It's the delivery cost.
This is delivery.
Delivery and the straight cost.
To your house.
Yeah.
It's for electric deliveries.
Yeah.
So indeed, that's only, the only business Con Ed is in at the moment there. They're not generating electricity, they're just distributors of it.
Right.
So at any rate, quite remarkable.
So maybe we don't buy from them anymore. What's our option?
Wood fires. We got a lot of wood.
Wood, yeah. Burn all the trees.
Called candles.
So in the category of, since we're on the subject of quasi-regulated utilities, let's move on to our next subject, which is cable TV. Two reports to be had tonight. The last resolution we have on our agenda tonight is to establish a public hearing for a proposed Verizon FiOS video franchise contract here in the Village of Pleasantville, and we are going to establish a public hearing on that subject for two weeks from today, which is Monday, January 25 at 8:00 PM. As you know, it has been a long and extended discussion, and we'll have a little more to say about it when we get to the resolutions, but Verizon, in the end, has given us the best deal that we believe we are likely to see from them, and they have agreed to file a formal application, which was itself in question at one point. So we now have before us a proposal and a proposed contract. That is now, I believe, a public document, Patty, at the point at which we have received it.
It's a public document, that's correct.
So if we could--
They filed the franchise.
We have officially had the formal application, and tonight we'll take the official action to notice a public hearing two weeks from today.
I'll put it all on the web.
So if we could get all this up on the website, anybody who has an interest in the Verizon FiOS contract is welcome to go to our website at pleasantville-ny.gov. Think you can get that up there by tomorrow, Patty? Certainly the next day or two.
Yeah.
The full text of the contract, which will be the subject of the public hearing, will be up on our website. So it's bittersweet news, certainly good that we have gotten to this point, regrettable that the contract, as you will shortly see, is not the contract we sought, but by the same token, we have finally been able to push this to the point where it's out into the open and there can be a public hearing. Verizon will make a presentation at the public hearing describing, we assume, the benefits to the village. If history in other communities any guide, Cablevision will likely also attend and comment as well, and members of the public who have any opinions pro and con are also invited to attend. So the other--
At that meeting, will they tell us why we're paying for HGTV and Food Network?
Well, that's the next thing.
Without getting--
Received a letter, as many of you know who are subscribers to cable television, the housing, garden TV and Food Network channels were pulled from your package because of a contract dispute between Cablevision and--
Pulled by Scripps, not by Cablevision.
And the content provider. I'll read this letter in a moment, but if you were following the cable TV news in the week that preceded it, there was a similar but even higher stakes battle going on between Fox TV and Time Warner that actually came to the brink of Fox services being pulled off the air for all of Time Warner's subscribers across the country. So what we're starting to see here is battles that go on between the content creators and the cable TV companies that distribute them. That's what's happened with Cablevision, so I'll read you this letter from Robert Hock of Cablevision. Dear Mayor, share in accordance with Public Service Law 24A and 16890.80, Cablevision hereby notifies your municipality of the elimination of HGTV and the Food Network from Cablevision's channel lineup effective January 21, 2010. The HGTV and Food Network were part of Cablevision's expanded basic or family tier prior to their elimination. Cablevision had an agreement with Scripps Network for carriage of HGTV and the Food Network that expired on December 31, 2009. Prior to expiration, Cablevision has been negotiating a new agreement with Scripps to allow Cablevision to continue to deliver these channels to our customers. Common practice in the industry is for the programmer to grant an extension should negotiations run up to the contract expiration. For example, such an extension occurred in the recent dispute between Time Warner Cable and Fox Network and in Scripps' own negotiations with Time Warner Cable. Cablevision was granted numerous such extensions in its negotiations with other programmers in 2009. Scripps did not grant such an extension to Cablevision and withdrew its programming on December 31. Accordingly, notice was timely filed with the Public Service Commission. In addition, Cablevision contacted the public service staff informally during non-business hours on January 1 to advise the staff of the discontinuation of its programming. Required subscriber notices have also been provided to customers. So any of you who picked up the Journal News today may have seen that Ramapo is filing with the PSC to request compensation for subscribers to the loss of these two channels.
Yep.
And certainly that's something we should explore as well.
Closest.
I think it's a manifestation of the fact that the cable industry is in quite a bit of flux at the moment and likely to remain so. And it, at least as the news reports indicate, some of the cable TV content providers are now asking for much more money than they have ever received in the past. So that is the crux of the argument. Cablevision has been presented as both the good guy and the bad guy in this fight. The good guy to the extent that they are theoretically arguing for lower prices, lower payment to the content providers and therefore lower, potentially lower prices to customers. The bad guy to the extent that they are trying to squeeze a content creator and ended up in a circumstance where this came to the brink, and all of us in the Village of Pleasantville who are Cablevision subscribers lost these two channels. So at any rate, I want to remind everybody that the Village of Pleasantville, in its franchise rights, has no control over what the programming is. We don't get to identify the channel lineup. We certainly can serve and intend to serve as advocates for the public good, but we are not in charge, nor do we have any right to comment in an official manner about who carries what channels, so.
Well, then why do they let us know?
They're required to let us know what goes on. I'm not sure actually that they're required to let the village board know. I think that probably is public relations gesture recognizing the fact that we get a lot of calls about it, but they're required evidently based on the PSC rules to notify the PSC of a situation of this kind. So at any rate, those of you who are interested pro or con on the subject of Verizon FiOS should look at the website, pleasantville-ny.gov, anytime after tomorrow or the next day, and also plan to tune in, call in, or attend the public hearing on a Verizon contract two weeks from today, the 25th.
Also, getting back to the Con Ed increase in delivery service, could we put this on the website too, for people to know why they're getting, so they can respond?
Well, why don't we just put a link, Patty, on our website--
That's good.
--to the PSC website.
People really need to know about this. They need to know that their energy costs could go up 19.5%.
Well, it's the delivery charge. It's not, it's not the energy cost.
It's still the cost of their energy.
It's not that, your bill wouldn't go up, I'm not, believe me, the last thing I want to do is be defending Con Ed, that's not where I'm feeling, but--
Well, why wouldn't my bill go up 19.5%?
Because electricity's only one one-half of your bill, and then the delivery charge is a subset of the electrical charge. You get charged for delivery, and you get charged the actual cost of the electricity.
So still, but my delivery charge then--
It's like your water bill. You get a delivery charge on your water bill, and then you get charged for the--
But still, my bill's going to go up.
Yes, it will.
Your bill is going to go up.
And then you're like, "My household, my parents won't visit anymore because my house is too cold," so.
We've taken to drinking a lot of red wine.
Do you use that strategically, or what?
Well, you know, now that I think about it, but no.
Freeze an apple, in-laws.
All right.
You're so dead now, John. You're so dead now, Jonathan.
I love my in-laws.
Is there any comment from a member of the public or anybody who would like to call in? 769-1677.
I want to just make a comment about the ambulance.
Okay, we'll come to that.
Okay.
Let Shane talk.
You want to talk first?
Come on.
I had a...
Shane McGaffey, 85, Nantahagan Road. I'm also PC TV station manager. I wanted to ask some questions about the actual Verizon public hearing. I know that you guys are going to vote today to have the public hearing on the 25th, and I wanted to ask some questions about that. But before I do that, actually, I wanted to let you know that I got a call from my wife earlier this evening, who said there was no sound on Channel 78. It's a Cablevision thing. We do, however, we are going out on 76. Not that people on 78 who are watching can hear that I'm saying that you go to Channel 76 to watch.
76.
But for whatever reason, so I'll call Cablevision as soon as this meeting is over and say, hey, why are we going out on 76? We know it's not our problem because there'll be no sound if there was something technically wrong here. But I wanted to alert you guys to the fact that on 78...
So there's still no sound on 78?
No, but on 76, there is.
All right, and should we, Jonathan's writing a note here, change to Channel 76. Should we hold that up?
Sure, we could do that. And then, while Jonathan's holding that up, I guess I will, basically, what I wanted to do is I wanted to ask how it is about the process. Tonight, we're voting on a resolution, or you're voting on a resolution.
You want to vote, too?
I can't. I'm on a board, but you're voting on a resolution to have a public hearing.
Whether to have a public...
Whether to have a public hearing on a proposed contract. So my first question to you is, how does a contract get to that point? What has to happen before there's a public, you know, for you to get to the point where you say, okay, we're going to have a public hearing on a contract?
All right, so let me answer that one first.
Okay.
The only thing that has to happen is that a potential cable TV provider has to file an application. They could do that out of the blue without even speaking to us. As soon as we receive this application, we're required to have a public hearing in order to consider it. That is the state law. In reality, the typical cable provider is not filing that application until they've been through an extended negotiation and have arrived at some point where they believe it in their interest to present it. So in the case of Cablevision, they're an existing franchise contract holder. That contract has expired. They've continued to operate in these six-month temporary operating authority extensions that come from Albany. And there have been periodic discussions with them, and indeed, they gave us a sample contract and said, we'll be happy to file this contract and go forward. At the same time, Verizon has been having negotiations with us, as you know, over a period now of, what, three years or so, originally as part of the consortium of several communities around, Osning, Newcastle, et cetera. In the end, some of those towns settled with Verizon, and we did not. And we have continued to negotiate on our own since then. We've arrived at a point, and I would be less than candid if I didn't say it, has been extremely frustrating and even offensive at various points. But we've certainly arrived at a point where it's my judgment that this is as good a contract as we are likely to see. And I think it's, it took some doing to get to the point that they actually filed it. And it seems to me, if this is the best contract we're going to see, then they should file it. It should be heard by the public, and it wins or loses based on its merits.
Okay, so if I understand you correctly, statewide, there's really no bar, there's no test for a contract to have a public...
I don't think so. Am I correct, Patty?
No.
It's just, all they have to do is file the application.
That's right.
Okay. So you didn't have to vote on it ahead of time?
Nobody has voted ahead of time.
But just might clarify something. Just because they filed the application, does that mean that we have to have a public hearing, or it's optional, whether we consider the contract?
They, the process would suggest that there's been some consensus on the content of the petition for a franchise.
Although it doesn't require that.
It doesn't necessarily dictate the outcome, but it does suggest that, you know, there's been discussion on the content of the petition, that the board would accept a hearing on that. So, you know, we, there really isn't question whether or not to go forward once you've reached a settlement.
And I'm not sure why we wouldn't have a public hearing, even if it were a contract that we were disinclined to accept.
I think that was a point, I think we went through a long process of reviewing this application and discussing it and decided that although we weren't necessarily comfortable with all aspects of it, that it was really important to bring it to the public's attention to have a public discussion and have the residents aware of the content and the opportunity and move forward with it. We might have, I suppose, in any situation, different parties are looking for something for their side, and so I'm not sure that it's unusual not to have everybody completely happy on all the issues going into a hearing. But I think that there's been enough of an outcry or a sense of interest from people within the community, we've all heard, that want to have the option of having another cable service, that we would not be serving our community by not bringing it forward.
Sure. Let me say this. First of all, I'm sure that everybody watching is assuming, because I run PC TV, that I'm here strictly as the station manager for PC TV, and I'm fighting for PC TV. And yes, I do believe in PC TV, and there are some concerns I have with the contract. But first and foremost, I'm here as a resident and a taxpayer. And before I say what I have to say, first, I want to say that, you know, I have great respect for each and every one of you on the board, and I know that you've been working on this contract and negotiating for a long time. And I really appreciate that, both as a PC TV person and as a resident of Pleasantville. I submit to you, however, that I do not think that we can actually have a public hearing on this particular contract until a few things happen. And let me just outline the three points that I have. Point number one is, I want to make sure that, before we have a public hearing, that the document, that, when did we receive this document? Just a couple days ago, right?
Thursday, perhaps? Last Thursday?
I want to make sure that the document...
Thursday, Wednesday.
But we've had the contract since December.
Friday.
We got it Thursday?
Friday.
Friday.
The formal application came Friday.
Okay, I just want to make sure that the formal application is indeed what we think it is. I can't, if I was to look at it right now, for example, I mean, you were having negotiations, and they were confidential, and so if I were to read it right now, I'd have no idea if they were indeed the terms that you potentially think they were. So what I would ask, before there was a public hearing, that A, we knew that the document in question was the document that you believed it to be.
And we have two weeks to do that.
Okay. So that's point number one. Point number two is that my understanding is that everybody who has a similar contract, meaning subscriber fees attached, a per-subscriber fee, that not one municipality, and there are eight of them, the first one was Greenberg, and they signed in 2006, has received any subscriber fees.
I can't say with certainty that none of them have, but certainly it's...
The best of my knowledge.
We're well aware of that problem.
Okay, and for me, there's a certain bar that you need to have to have a public hearing. I would like, I imagine that for there to be a level playing field where things are actually discussed, someone's got to have a track record of at least a couple of times following through on what it is they've put a pen to paper for. And I have some serious concerns about discussing something when, to the best of my knowledge...
Well, now, those are the things that you asked them, and it's not like we haven't, we haven't had, we have had that discussion. These were some of our concerns. That's why this has been such a long time in waiting, is that, believe us, that is some of the things that we were tackling, and this is the best we've got. So those are the questions you asked Verizon. When they come up here and they say, this is a great deal, and this is ba-ba-ba, you say to them, have you paid?
And there's another thing, point number three.
Let me just, just for the benefit of those watching, the reason Verizon has refused to pay their per-subscriber fees for public access programming in those other communities is that they claim they are not responsible for doing so until and unless Cablevision is contracted with the same municipality for an equivalent level playing field obligation. So that has been the argument.
And they're right about that.
So, well, whether they're right about that is another, I wouldn't go there.
That is PSC's...
There's another, there's another point. I would argue that the contract, as I understand, of course, it's not quite a public document yet, but as I understand...
It's public now.
Public, yeah.
Here you go.
As I understand, is it, my understanding is that it's a 15-year contract. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I would argue that, and the court, it's in, my understanding is it's in court right now, that a 15-year contract is not valid. And that all the 15-year contracts are actually in court, being changed to 10-year contracts because they're not allowing 15-year contracts. So I have a hard time even discussing, even discussing something.
Another issue we had a problem.
We had a problem.
Let me just say, I'm delighted to have your comments. I'm going to ask you to save the detail on them for the public hearing itself.
Absolutely.
Because that's the setting in which Verizon will be in the room. None of what, I thank you for bringing all these things up. None of these things are news to us, and they have been the source of a lot of effort expended and some blood shed here. By the same token, we're in an environment where I think it's fair to say, we have what we have, and it's...
Negotiations are over.
Negotiations are over. They're not going anywhere with this.
I understand that. I respectfully submit that it's not possible to have a public hearing on something that we're calling a dog, when in fact, we're discussing a cat.
Shane, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what your point is here. We have in black and white the contract that the public hearing is going to be based upon. We have all read it, and we will read it multiple times at that point. That's the point at which anybody who has comments or concerns about it, pro or con, is welcome to comment about it. And after that hearing, either that day or at a future meeting, if we decide to adjourn the vote to pursue some of these issues, we'll have to vote on it yea or nay. But I don't think there's any reason not to have a public hearing. It is crystal clear what's being offered to us. The nuances of it, the implications of it, I think are broadly known to us, but you, because of your specific circumstance, will have lots to add to it, and we welcome it.
And, no, that, I wish most people, especially the people that have been writing very nasty emails for the last two years, sorry, some of them are my good friends, but, that they would understand it in this light, that this wasn't something that any of us did lightly. We struggled with each and every one of those points that you mentioned, and 10 more. And, you know, a lot of people don't see those points at all, and all they want is, you know, a choice. And that was always, first and foremost, on every single one of our minds, is that we need to give the people, the Village of Pleasantville residents, a choice. And that's why we are where we are today.
I think Shane's point, and I don't, you know, know whether you withhold these comments for the resolution itself or whatever, but I think that, I think that Shane's point, though, is well, are well-taken, and that is, and everybody's points are well-taken. This was, this contract could be construed as choice at any cost. I mean, literally, there was, when we say negotiations, it's almost a joke. I mean, this contract was basically handed to us and said, take it or leave it. And the board struggled with that, still struggling with it, at least I'm still struggling with the concept of, you know, what kind of partner is that to have for 15 years for the Village of Pleasantville? So it's far from clear to me as to whether or not this is something that I vote yes for or no for. I hope that, you know, the public hearing isn't just people who want it, because, as Minya said, we've heard from those people for the last two or three years, some very loudly, some very rudely. And yes, it's not like we weren't trying to do the right thing and move this thing forward every time. Who we haven't heard from, who are going to be impacted equally, but maybe negatively, are the people that haven't paid attention to this issue and don't realize, in fact, that there are some real potential costs to doing this, costs to choice. And, you know, in competition, what a joke. This contract is going to mean, at the very least, a reduction in revenue for the village. And at the worst, potentially, reduction in overall quality for residents, depending on how you view it. There's nuances within the contract that could lead you to that decision. And again, some of this will come out in public hearing. Maybe we'll put together a primer on it, with just the details put out in English because the contract is very legalese. Nonetheless, I think this is something that everybody in Pleasantville should pay attention to and come out to the public hearing on. And familiar with themselves with some of the nuts and bolts of it, it's not that complicated when you boil it down. And make sure you're comfortable with what we've struggled very hard with over the last year in particular.
So just so you know, Shane, I mean, what we're faced with, and we're very sympathetic to what you're saying, and there are many other aspects that you haven't mentioned that we are equally dissatisfied with, some of us, anyway. But it comes down to this, and we will say it again, we've been saying this to ourselves and amongst ourselves for months, it's a take it or leave it, and they will walk. That's what we're convinced of, they'll walk away. Now, some people might say, that's fine, let them walk. But there are also people in this town who, when they write a check to Cablevision every month, and they think, they think that this board is costing them, that's what their perception is, costing them a significant amount of money because they see the ads for FiOS, and they think that service is better, and...
Or they're deprived of content that is available on one or not the other.
Exactly. So if we sort of take the high road and say bye-bye to Verizon, then we have a whole different raft of problems that are significant to a lot of people in this village. That's the problem. There is no good solution here. And this is one of those times when, as a public official, you really don't sleep well at night because there's no good way.
Hence why you go to another reason. It's great to have a public hearing, because at a certain point, those interested ask the right questions, and then, at a certain point, we need to put the onus on the consumer. You know what's out there, you know what you're getting, buyer beware. The FiOS guy shows up with his mother, you know, trying to sell you something, you know, the mother's going to tell you, he's lying. He's only kidding.
No, I'm all for, I'm all for competition. Let me, let me just say something. I obviously, I broke a rule tonight.
This is not competition, just FYI.
I understand. I broke a rule tonight. Lawyer one-on-one, you never ask a question you don't know the answer to.
Right.
I asked a question I didn't know the answer to. I was expecting it to be a different answer. The question was, is there a bar that needs to be met for there to be a public hearing? There is no bar that needs to be met. However, I would submit to you that morally, there is, and that discussing a contract that, on the merits, legally probably isn't valid...
I would just add a nuance, Shane. There isn't, there isn't a bar set by ordinance or by law.
Right.
But there is a bar that's set by the folks who are on this side of the table, and especially Jonathan and Peter, I think, who've been most deeply involved with this, who are trying to, have been working to try and establish the best possible deal.
I understand, and I appreciate that.
And I think that what's being offered is the best possible deal that we were able to extract from this particular company. And that's, you take it as far as you can, and I hope you'll repeat your comments and others at the public hearing, because that's really, that's really the setting for this stuff, for people to hear it and for people to think about it, and for people to become informed and to have the opportunity to enjoy some of the issues that we've been kicking around here.
Struggling.
But I think that's the forum, and I think you really need to bring these issues up and hear it.
Let me also say, and you may be aware of this, that Verizon has been less active in trying to close the remaining franchises in Westchester recently. One that they recently did close, which was about six weeks ago in Bedford, provides for zero contribution to public access services. And so the deal we have on the table substantially exceeds that, I'm happy to report. And indeed, we have been successful in increasing the PEC support in this, in this contract from where it was some months ago, and that involved a lot of hours on everybody's part to try to get to that point, so...
And thank you, and I appreciate the work that you guys put in.
And let me also say, I don't wish to be, I don't think anybody should misunderstand the circumstance here. I think there will be plenty of cause for argument about both of these companies, Cablevision and Verizon.
I don't disagree.
Each for their own reasons. They are in a... They are in a high-stakes game in an environment that didn't used to put two players in the same space, and now it does. And they are also struggling, as we heard earlier, in battles with the content providers who are seeking more money from them. And so it's, it's going to be a bit of a roller coaster ride, I think, in cable TV for a little.
Right, I don't, you know, people don't understand that the problems Cablevision has when they drop, you know, when they have programs drop because they're negotiating with other providers, that, you know, if you don't think that this is going to happen with every cable provider that you have, you're fooling yourself, like, you know, I, I mean, it, it may give you great pleasure when Cablevision drops a couple of channels, now, oh, I'm going to switch over to so-and-so. All right, that's great, that's great, you could get your, you know, temper tantrum out like that, but, and we all like to do that every once in a while, I'm not knocking it, but, you know, everybody has the same problems. It's not exclusive to Cablevision.
In the end, however, the real shame of all this really is, I think, in the real, in the end, everybody's going to be watching TV on the internet.
Right.
And we don't get any franchise fees from the internet, and you'll be paying to watch your channels through the internet, and we won't be able to get any of that revenue anyway.
Actually, Shane, my mom and dad watch our meetings in New Jersey because of you.
That's great.
Isn't that great?
I'm talking about the other channels.
Tom, she ever help you watch your mom and dad?
But I think that's the way it's going to end up going. Your television is going to be tied into your watching on the internet, and we, the way the contracts are written, don't get any of that revenue anyway.
Right.
And how would we?
Right. You really can't. I think that's the wave of the, but that's the future, too.
Yep.
Well, Shane, we knew that 10 years ago.
I know, I know.
We knew that way back before.
And we knew a lot about what we're talking about tonight a while ago, too, didn't we?
Right, yeah.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Shane, very much.
I appreciate your time.
Likewise.
And thanks for working as hard as you are.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to add?
Oh.
Okay.
I do.
Oh, yes.
Actually, I was just looking to see if anybody else did. But, no, I, I also, I just wanted to say, I, I got to go to the ambulance corps dinner, the Pleasantville Ambulance Corps dinner, and it was, it was really a, a great dinner at Caserina, and I'm sorry, Patty got sick and couldn't join me, and you were away, but I did get to sit with County Legislature Nona and the new town supervisor, Joan Mayberry, which was very nice, and my date, Chief Charletti. But I, I was really very touched, and, and they thanked you, Mayor, and, and you, Patty, very much for all of the help that you give them and everything in the Village of Pleasantville. But the, the amount of hours and calls and dedication of these people is just blew my mind, and it's really, the core group is the Wynn family. The, the kids, the, the son-in-laws, the, although they have one son-in-law that's deployed right now. It was just amazing to me, the amount of calls they go on and the, and the service that they give on a volunteer basis. It, it's just, it's amazing, and I just want to thank them very much for their service, and it, it was really very well attended, a great night, and the youth corps was, was there. A boy that is in college had the most amount of calls out of anybody, and he goes to Brockport. So we're trying to figure out how he's doing that, going back and forth to school. But there was also, they, they recognized the two crews that responded to the horrible accident on the Taconic with all those fatalities, and that was very touching. And, and also, a gentleman that has really given back because of what the ambulance, a call the ambulance corps had answered, I think in 2003, their little son was, was really very sick, and this guy, this son is doing well now and everything, he's, he's, he's doing very well, but he's decided to give back to the ambulance corps, and, and he did a little presentation, and it's a triathlon that he puts together every year. And I could get more information on that or from the ambulance corps, which, if we could participate in that, that would be great. But that was also a, a great thing. So I just wanted to thank them very much and recognize them for all their service.
I echo all of that, and actually, Patty, I think we should choose a, an evening when perhaps the leadership of the ambulance corps can come and talk a little bit about what they do.
Ready to say?
A remarkable bunch of people, and.
A bit inside government.
Even, even added to that, quite a number of ambulance corps members, including some of the leaders, are also members of the fire department. So these are people that could have any number of beepers go off in the middle of the night and jump out of their beds when the rest of us are sleeping to come to, to come to our aid. So a great night.
Yeah, it was, it was wonderful. It really was a great night.
And the Wynn family, it was a lucky, a lucky day for the Village of Pleasantville where the Wynn family moved near our.
And, and they worked together, which is amazing to me, the husband and the wife, you know.
That loan was made.
Never recommended.
Jim.
They do it well, though, they do it well.
With that thought, Steve has the honor of the first resolution of 2010, number one.
Oh, wow, we're back to one. That's pretty cool.
Resolved, the pre-check registered date is January 11th, 2010, covering check number 65354 to 65468 has been reviewed, and they are hereby approved as listed below. General fund, $144,983.57. Water fund, $2,951.34. Capital fund, $5,531. Refuge fund, $3,044.45. Pool, $1,232.99, for a total of $157,743.34.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Patty, I was interested in the sand and salt amount.
Twelve grand.
How are we doing on sand and salt?
I'll have to check, I don't know, but I do know that we have minimum requirements, so we've already put our bids in a year in advance, so we, it's a take-or-pay type thing, so we have to pay, you know, what we've, what we've committed to. But Steve said that this year there's an extraordinary number of ICE events, as you know, so.
That's right, that's right. Our Brian trust has been on it.
Yeah.
I think it's all on my block, but the glacier that's there.
Yes, I know the glacier.
They've done a great job, Steve's crew.
But it was, I, I, I read that it was the coldest December, or a certain one of the coldest December since records have been kept.
Doesn't surprise me.
So.
Carbon-based.
I know, exactly.
Gas up your Cleveland.
Yeah.
All right, did you get a second on that?
Yes, me, I was a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Mindy?
Resolved that the Board of Trustees has reviewed the minutes of the meeting held on Monday, December 28th, and they are hereby approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Jonathan?
Whereas the next village election for the Village of Pleasantville, New York, will be held on Tuesday, March 6th, 2010, now therefore be.
16.
Excuse me.
Sorry.
Thank you. March 16th, 2010. Now therefore be resolved that the polling place for the March 16th, 2010 village election shall be located at the Village Hall, 80 Wheeler Avenue, first floor, Pleasantville, New York. And the hours of sit-election shall be from 12:00 PM to 9:00 PM?
Yes.
We're only doing 12 to 9?
Yes, you're, you're allowed to, that's the, the shortest amount.
The first floor?
Yeah.
Downstairs?
Yeah.
In the lobby?
I'm assuming that it's going to be very quiet, well, then we'll have plenty of room.
Hopefully it'll be warmer.
I'm warmer.
You have those space heaters.
I can't do it up here because the court, I don't want to kick the court out for a very, I'm hoping, quiet.
But if there needed to be, if it, if it wasn't a quiet election, then we need to move it upstairs. Would this need to be re-noticed, or?
No, the site is the site, you're okay. The site is. Yeah.
So should we simply eradicate from the resolution first floor?
Yeah, it's fine. I mean, as long as 80 Wheeler Avenue, people can find the polling site once they're here.
We could sign it downstairs.
That's smart.
What, what, what machine, dare I ask?
None.
It's going to be paper, paper bel.
A shoebox. Paper bel. I'd love that.
She made it last time.
Wow, we are going, we are going back.
Probably save a lot of money.
Going old school.
We're going, we're going after Annie.
Hey, can we have a little?
Get some mules?
Go purple thumbs!
All right, all in favor, as amended, to remove one, first floor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Brian?
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby appoints the following members to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board for a term to expire April 2013. Geraldine Stapleton, Armand D'Angelo.
Is there a second?
Second.
Parks and Rec Advisory Board is a seven-member board, and it has had two vacancies for the last some months. We thank Geraldine Stapleton and Armand D'Angelo for volunteering for that service.
Yes, they'll be great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Steve?
Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby accepts a donation to the Pleasantville Police Department from Delcro Interiors, Inc., in the amount of $500.
That's very nice.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much to Delcro Interiors.
How's that used?
Donuts, donuts.
See, that's not a helpful comment.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Thank you very much, Delcro, for this contribution, we appreciate it. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Mindy?
Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village attorney to proceed with the following settlement of certiorari petition by 140 Bedford Road LLC as follows. The assessment of 2006, $46,450 is the original assessment, the proposed assessment is $40,350. 2007, same amount of the original assessment all the way down is $46,450, the proposed is $36,750. 2008, same original assessment, proposed assessment is $34,900. And in 2009, same original assessment to the proposed assessment of $36,360. And resolved that the village treasurer is authorized to issue the applicable refunds to the petitioner's attorney upon receipt of an executed order from a court.
Is there a second?
A second, and, and the refund is how much in our letter it was?
$2,700 in total.
Okay, all right.
140 Bedford Road is a residence?
No, that's a small commercial property between the firehouse and, and the.
It's not that nail salon.
It's vacant right now. It's in the old village.
Is it that little, is it that little?
Yes, it's small, nice looking building.
That little brick building, that little bunker?
Yes.
A bunker?
I thought that was a nail salon or a beauty salon.
All right, all in favor?
Stand with me.
Aye, motion approved. Jonathan? Oh, Jonathan, you got the, the year he started.
Oh, good. Oh, God.
Oh, you gave him a budget amendment?
Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves the following budget amendments. We're going to transfer $600, $600 from the Police Detective Conference to Detective Overtime. We're going to transfer $559 from Police Detective Supplies to Police Detective Overtime. We're going to transfer $3,633 from contingency to Police Administration part-time. We are going to transfer $1,830 from contingency to Safety Inspection part-time. We're going to transfer $2,412 from contingency to Water Administration part-time. $4,663 from contingency to the good old MTA payroll tax. $266, by the way, when do we get our board seat at that, so we can actually be present for being taxed for that representation? $266 from contingency to the MTA payroll tax. $286 from contingency to the MTA payroll tax. And still, they're $200 million behind budgets.
I know, it's true.
Outrage.
The, we're also going to appropriate the general fund balance to cover the Foxwood appraisal and court fees to an amount of increase of $2,485 to judgment slash contract services. And $361, we're going to transfer from the Senior Transportation and Trips Program to the Senior Trips Program.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, obviously, the items coming out of contingency are unexpected expenses, the others are transfers from one budget line to another.
Well, some are. We, we actually started our fiscal year by budgeting part-time staff for a limited amount of time, and we agreed to look at the budget in the six months to see where we were with respect to the health of, you know, the fiscal year, and we're, we're, we're right on budget. We did budget a full year's worth of part-time assistance in contingency, so we're transferring another three months' worth of salary out of contingency for various part-time positions. The MTA payroll tax was not anticipated, you know, when we adopted our budget, so that's true.
It's killing small businesses.
It does appear that they are going to roll.
It's killing small businesses.
They're planning on rolling that back a little bit, but I don't know when and what that means at this point, that there, there's some discussion in all to do that.
It's five, nearly $5,000 out of MTA payroll tax for us alone.
For just this.
It's awful.
It's paid how often? Because we just had a big one.
Quarterly, I believe.
It's quarterly?
Yeah.
Not too long ago, it was even larger than that.
All right.
And I should, I should let you know that one of our part-timers will be retiring, Gail Burwa, who's been working here many years in the Finance Department. Her last day of work will be the last day in January.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so we will miss her. She's been quite, quite an asset for the village over the years.
Will we hire, think about hiring, if we're placed for her?
No, we're just going to absorb, you know, the, the effort.
All right, well, we thank Gail for many years of service and wish her well in her retirement ventures. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Brian?
This is the big one. This is the big one. This is in Shane's honor. Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village clerk to notice a public hearing for Monday, January 25th, 2010, 8:00 PM, 8:00 PM prevailing time, 80 Wheeler Avenue, second floor, Pleasantville, to hear comments.
We just received a call.
As it, let's see, for the purpose of considering a proposed initial franchise agreement for cable television service, service in Pleasantville, New York, with Verizon New York, Inc., copies of the franchise application and of the proposed franchise agreement are on file at Village Hall, 80 Wheeler, and may be viewed during normal business hours between.
8:30 and 4:00.
8:30 and 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday. All interested persons will have the opportunity to be heard during the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
So in addition to coming here to see it, as mentioned earlier in the meeting, we'll post Verizon's proposed contract on the website, pleasantville-ny.gov, and look forward to comments either in person or by phone, or by letter or email if you wish to do so in advance. The hearing is Monday, January 25th at 8:00 PM here in Village Hall.
I wonder if we could put a copy of that contract at the reference room, or the reference desk in the library?